Okay, we will call to order. Welcome to the October 23rd, 2018 regular session of Hillsborough School District Board of Records. Please start all our meetings with a flag speech. Thank goodness.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a special recognition this month. In June 2017, the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors approved the decision to participate in the Oregon School Force Association, OSBA, Promise Scholarship Program, a training program through school boards that upon completion provides a $5,000 scholarship for district students. Throughout the 2017-18 school year, the board participated in the program, which includes the following comments: superintendent evaluation, board self-evaluation, boardsmanship training series, board project, Hillsborough School District Selecting Project, community engagement. On September 11th, the board completed the program, and this evening, representative of OSBA will present the board with the $5,000 scholarship check and funds. Scholarship funds in the form of a big check. Really excited about the big check. And remember, Thursday, the board is scheduled to determine the process and timeline for awarding the scholarship funds. Come on down, Kristen.
Congratulations to all of you for completing this. I just have to reel check. Exactly. Somebody always wants that really badly. Here's that.
Michelle.
But, so, can I hand this to you? And then I want to take a picture with all of you. If anybody else would like to take pictures. So congratulations.
Always wanted to hold a big check.
You won the scholarship.
Yes.
Come on around.
I'll take pictures.
For Alison, for you.
I would ask of Mike Joyce, too.
Yep, yep. Grab my camera.
Michelle wants a picture.
Can you get by Jackie? There you go. That's more balanced. All right, good. And we've got a light beam hitting the five. Okay, there we go.
Thank you, congratulations. And, yes, please keep that. And then remove your choice. And, uh, thank you. We'll follow up to see what your process was like, where you get your funds to. So, thank you.
Thanks, very much.
Yeah, thank you. Nice to see you.
All right, everyone, that brings us to item C of our agenda. So I am ready to hear a motion about approving the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Second. Okay, it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim. We approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Okay, if you would like to approve the agenda as printed, as Jackie moved and Kim seconded, please say aye.
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 If not, please say no. The motion passes. Um, Director Mark Watson is attending via speakerphone, which is why there was that awkward robot voice. So that will happen. Yes, wonderful. Okay, so we are at audience time. We do have two audience parts. Um, so I will read our statement about audience participation, and then we'll start with Angela, and then maybe, but it takes me minutes to read this, so please be patient. Public participation in board meetings is governed by Policy BDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent-to-speak card available on the back table and provide it to the board secretary. Comments concerning a published agenda item are limited to its designated place on the agenda unless otherwise authorized by the board. Comments about non-agenda items will be heard during audience time at the beginning of the regular session. Speakers should state their name and, if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Three minutes will be allowed for an individual speaker. Five minutes will be allowed for a visitor who is speaking on behalf of a group. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include Board Policy KL, Public Complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. Okay, so Angela, come on down, and then maybe we will be second.
Thank you. I'm Angela Adma. As a teacher, parent, and community member, I just wanted to stand in a quick way gratitude to HEA, HDU, and the district bargaining teams for their dedication and work to help get contracts that will help us meet students' needs and change lives. I also wanted to express the need to revise the budget and priorities to ensure that teachers and staff are able to get a cost of living raise on par with the increase of cost of living, not the 1.5% currently offered. I look forward to getting these contracts settled and having to spend some security and appreciation so that I can stay proudly HSD.
Thank you, Angela. Maybe?
Hello, my name is Megan Ferrin. I am here to represent myself, and I have more questions for the board. I wanted to know what this stands is on the Dyslexia Awareness Month. And the reason I'm asking is because Kate Brown signed the declaration for October 2018 to be Dyslexia Awareness Month, and I've seen other districts like the Biggis Winkle District making a lot of fuss about it and being very open about it, the principals sending out emails about it, it's on their webpage and so on and so forth. And I'm just wondering, because I haven't heard great peep about it in the Hillsborough School District, and being a parent off of Dyslexia, I'm obviously very passionate about it, and just wanted to see what is our stance about it and how come it feels like there's never even the word said within this district? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we typically during this time don't engage in a back and forth, but I can get someone to contact you to tell you more about, you know, that there's a state law that requires that we engage in dyslexias screening, and that's something that's been in place for the last year or so. So do you feel confident that we are meeting all the requirements there and that we are meeting to, that we are working to understand the needs of each of our students and to meet those needs? I mean, in terms of the various resolutions that come across from the state, we don't always, you know, I guess, go full throttle with others in terms of the recognition around that, but in terms of the requirements to meet the students' needs, that's something we, of course, value and strive for all the time. Beyond that, I don't know what else I would add to that. That's kind of where we are.
I can follow up, Mike, with her name.
And Assistant Superintendent Travis Ryan is going to follow up, too, as well, to get some good comments. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, Northwest Regional ESD Board Director Lisa Bollocks is here. Come on down, Lisa.
Hi, I'm back just to get a little update on a project we're working on. We have a PowerPoint. So this is a current project we're working on, and which Hillsborough School District is also involved with us. Go to the next slide. What's that? Oh. So why did we choose Ninth Grade Success? Through partnership with the University of Chicago and the Network for College Success, we learned that students who are on track during their ninth grade year are almost four times more likely to graduate than off-track students. That's a need that was identified. During the 17-18 school year, the Northwest Regional ESD began working with their school districts in the Northwest Region on Ninth Grade Success. And then throughout that year, guided district teams through improvement science process to help them address problems of practice within their own means school environments. What's unique about that is each of the school districts came together, and so we have thirty school districts involved in this effort. So next week, we found out the Gates Foundation also has an interest, sorry, it went to, let me just talk. After recognizing how closely the Ninth Grade Success professional learning aligned with the networks for school improvement, Northwest Regional ESD responded to an RFP for the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And this is their statement of what they're trying to do. Can you click on that link, please? There's a short video that explains the Gates efforts.
....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Wonderful. Thank you for the technical assistance on that. In that video, the organization that is the, that they were referring to, in this case, was the Northwest Regional ESD. So in spring of 2018, we were rewarded a Tier Two grant from the Gates Foundation for $586,000 for the next 24 months. So then we began working with thirty different schools, high schools, in Platteville, Columbia, Toulon, and Westing County, including all the high schools in the Hillsborough School District. So our next step as an ESD would be, in eighteen months, we are preparing to apply for a Tier One grant, which generally is awarded between $5 and $15 million. The likelihood of receiving a Tier One grant is significantly increased because we've got a Tier Two. And again, those efforts would be to continue with the same thing. And this last one is just a picture of one of our, this fall's kickoff for the High School Success. Do you think we've got any questions about our, this, ESD?
Yes, I would add, I know Travis is being part of this work as well, but I would add that one of the things that you heard me talk about a year or so ago is the fact that Northwest Regional ESD has really worked to align themselves with the needs of the school districts, and Ninth Grade On Track is something that is a huge indicator for student success. So that being one of the cornerstones of the work that Northwest Regional ESD is doing that directly ties with the work that we're doing. And Travis, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yeah, if I can just thank you, Lisa, for your work and for what the ESD has done to bring us together. The, our teachers have access to, our teachers and administrators at our high schools have access to researchers from Chicago Public Schools and folks who are national experts on how to get kids on track and then keep them on track to graduation. So not only is this a good infusion of expertise for us in the region, but it's also, I missed this one, I'm sorry. But at the other meetings, we always showcase professional practice, and we have panels of administrators and teachers and classified employees who are working with ninth graders to share what they're doing at, for example, Hillsborough High School, we have folks from all around the region, and it really elevates the status of their work and then creates a forum where there's a real, like, network of professionals working on a really important topic together. So just the format of the whole thing has been wonderful, and I think our kids immediately benefited from it as soon as it got going last year. So this year, we hope for expansion and improvement of our practices. Thank you very much.
One of the things the grant has allowed us to do, though, is help pay for the subs so that the teachers can go to those conferences. So the other, one of the other things we're working on as a board is, our superintendent is retired, so our big effort this year is to find her replacement superintendent. That will be kicking off late November with the higher date of February, so we've got a close timeline. That's our big news.
One more question on the Ninth Grade Success.
Yeah, I just had a question about, are we also incorporating student parenting into this initiative, or how does that look likewise? Is this just mostly based on the administration?
This is teachers, administrators, and classified, Travis mentioned, and so I don't know if they are going back to their schools and getting the input from parents as well. I don't know that answer. The parents are not coming to these meetings.
And the way we look at this on the district side is that it's all part of our high school success and Measure 98 high school work. So under the categories of dropout prevention and graduation success, college-level coursework and CTE, this is all kind of in there, and we've gotten student and parent feedback as we developed our strategic plan, as we built our Measure 98 plan. So each school has a different approach due to their own students' needs. And so when this came to the table and we got participants involved in it, it was just furthering work that we were already intending to do and that was driven from our own student and family needs. So that's kind of how it lines up from our strategic plan to Measure 98 to this specific piece of the project for our schools.
And in fact, that's how this was identified as a need is because there's a need in all the districts with the same type of work. This is what we're doing there. Do you have any other questions about ESD or what we're doing?
I see. Sorry.
Just one little plug as you hire your new superintendent.
It's a big one.
Yeah, that's a big replacement, for sure. We have really appreciated the very deliberate efforts on the part of the Northwest Regional ESD to just to provide a customer service that's very specific to the district's history. And we appreciate that board had a rock in at the helm, and I know that's in the desire of the Northwest Regional ESD Board as well.
Absolutely.
So just anything you need to do to continue that thing is, I really appreciate.
Thank you. That is definitely our goal.
Good luck on your search.
Thank you.
Fight and endeavor, and we also really appreciate you giving the time.
Thanks for the time.
All right, October enrollment report with Kana and Michelle. Do you have the information here in our packet? Any highlights for us?
Yes, we just wanted to share about our enrollment changes this year, and we had chaired in some board updates about kindergarten enrollment increasing this year. We had growth at Orenco, Lennox, and Indian Hills. And then we also had growth at the high school level in Liberty. And so as we think about the North Plains area and those schools on that north side making growth, we're seeing a lot of growth happening more at that elementary level. And I was talking with Mike about kind of the decrease that we're seeing in September and eighth, and kind of like elementary is the time when people want to start and move into a new place, and sometimes they may have kids that are older. So I'd like to say that we're poised for growth, and I think that we can say that, you know, we have homes like in North Plains, South Meadows, and the urban growth boundary in Cornelius that are going to impact future growth, and that we're on that target for that. And I think some of the pieces that also are braided into this enrollment component is the leadership that Dale and Travis have provided with getting to know students by name, strength, and need, Measure 98. I think that's helping us keep our students engaged and enrolled through partnerships with internship programs, college curve pathways, and CTE. So it's exciting to see that start to happen. And I know that you guys heard upstairs that we're having the demographics looked at in North Plains again before we make decisions about, yeah, decisions about the new school. And then on the second page, just looking at our numbers and seeing that we are, you know, really becoming that minority-majority district and that we're seeing particularly growth in students that come from multiple different diverse backgrounds, and our Hispanic students are increasing in number across the district. Michelle, did you want to add anything to that?
Just note that, you know, comparing this to our budget document and the projections we have included there, that this is typically the highest point of the year for enrollment. We are expecting some growth, we'll do some move-ins, but we're pretty much on line with our projected year budget here.
Thank you, Michelle. Looks like Jackie has a special time.
I've got one question. On the historical data, do we know why the enrollment has been going down since 2013?
Yes, we do. So a large part of that has to do with the larger senior 12th grade classes that were graduating, and then we had smaller numbers of kindergarten students enrolling. And as we moved from full-day kindergarten, we thought that our numbers would be increasing more because we had, prior to 2015, we had a half-day kindergarten program, so.
And on the, the race percentages chart, when was the, the race choices were changed at some point? When was that? Do we know?
I don't have the answers.
Were they added some more and so?
I think it was 2010.
Was it 2010? Okay, I just want to be sure.
Or not, just one of those.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Strategic Plan Goals update with Mike.
Actually, Beth is going to take this one. She is one of the writers of the updates. She gathers input from the cabinet, and then she'll walk us through this. Whatever works for you.
I can stand here. So we are in year three of our current five-year strategic plan, and as we have been doing every year, and we've gone over with you all at the board retreat, is every year we come up with a, with a slate of SMART goals that we're going to really focus on and report to board on throughout the course of the year. Last year, we streamlined those a bit from our year-one goals. And we felt like those were a really good set of priorities for us to work toward. We connected each of the six goals that we had identified last year with our desire to connect students to community, culture, and career. And we have continued that this year with largely the same goals, just with some tweaks based on our results from last year and some slightly new twists to those goals and things that we want to accomplish this year. So our, the way we're organizing our thoughts here is that we have a SMART goal that is intended to move the needle ultimately on getting us closer to our strategic objective of all students graduating from our system with career cultivating skills. And so creating that SMART goal that we believe can help get us there. And then taking a look at as we develop that SMART goal and also as we kind of develop our approach and determine what kinds of actions we're going to take in the course of any given year. We consider the research behind the actions that we're considering taking, the research behind focusing on that goal to begin with. What kinds of inputs are we going to be receiving? Be those stakeholder feedback, students, staff, parents, and so on. And then, of course, what is the data that we're going to be looking at that can support the metrics that we're going to use to determine whether or not we've come close to meeting that goal, meeting or exceeding that goal? And then having an opportunity to look at the actions taken, the results, and ultimately status. Of course, since we are mid-year, and this is just our first update of the 2018-19 school year, I'm just going to go ahead and spoiler alert, tell you that the status on all of these is that they're in progress. There has been work that has taken place in each of these six SMART goal areas. None of them has been attained as of yet, but they're all in progress. So what I'd really like to kind of just focus in on are those six goals and what some of those actions are that have been taken and results that we've seen so far. Because I think that'll give you a good sense of the types of work that's occurring in each of these different areas. So under community, the first of our two SMART goals there is to train 100% of our secondary school administrators, counselors, and grad coaches to use our student information system to identify which students are known by name, strength, and need. Of course, we have been touting the importance of knowing students by name, strength, and need and ensuring that they are advocated for by a trusted adult, that they're connected to things both inside and outside of school to ensure that they have that relevance that is needed to be meaningful to them and to their educational journey. So the actions that have been taken so far on this SMART goal are that within the data collection system, we have identified programs, groups, and adult advocate as a measure of whether or not students are connected and what kinds of things might still be needed for certain students in our system. And trainings have taken place. And there is some additional training that's being planned for the winter. So we're beginning to get students tagged to respective groups so that information shows up in our data warehouse. And we currently have the capability to measure the participation rates in athletics and activities. So I think it's just kind of taking the next steps beyond athletics and activities and really being able to indicate, you know, who is a student's adult advocate that's not necessarily their parent or guardian, but who else might there be that could be that person that's there standing up for that student? In the second SMART goal, we want to once again increase by 10% the number of students participating in career-related internships by next spring. We have made year-over-year growth in this area over the last four years, I believe. And actions we've taken have taken the form of building new partnerships. We're doing that all the time. Just to sit and listen to Burke Nova talk about what she does on a daily basis is quite overwhelming because she is always out there with great ideas, making connections, and getting people on board with this work, so that is very exciting. And we're also increasing enrollment in our CTE pathways courses. So as a recent example of some of this work, we had more than 200 students that participated in Manufacturing Day that took place on October 5th. Of course, that's just one example out of many of the types of opportunities that students have available to them. So that was pretty successful. Under our culture band, our first goal is to offer professional development regarding trauma-informed practices to all staff with a goal of specifically growing the skillset of 200 classified staff. The reason for that being that a lot of times it is our classified staff who have those connections with students outside of the classroom and can really be a help in ensuring that students have the support that they need and are accessing the various types of services that are meaningful to them. So we had just recently, about two weeks ago, had a full-day training on trauma-informed practices in which 58 classified staff members have attended. And then we have site-based trainings that are scheduled in the coming months. So as a result, classified staff are having more access to resources and training opportunities. Second goal in this area is to increase by 5% the number of historically underserved groups on track to graduate in ninth grade, kind of in concert with what Lisa just shared from the ESD. And our actions taken in this area, we had our second year of the 8.5 Summer Bridge Program and also of our ninth-grade-on-track partnership with the University of Oregon and ESD, as we just heard of. And there are certain staff that are going to be attending a national training here in the next month. We do currently have grad coaches that are serving our freshmen. And we also have a cohort of Latino youth that are being mentored through a pilot program in our high schools. So as a result, we have our, a lot of our at-risk students that are being monitored and supported. And we have data systems in place to track that progress. So our final area, which is career, goal one is to increase math scores by 3% overall and 5% for historically underserved groups in 1819. And this, I might not be going out on too far, but I love to say this might be one of our more challenging goals that we have here. But we are hitting that head-on with some training that we have conducted with teachers in August on best practices in the classroom. I learned a little something about S-Back. There's this thing called Claim Data, which is basically kind of types of problems and processes that indicate a successful math student. And being able to really understand a student's scores within any one of those given claims gives some good information to teachers on how to support and bolster student skills within different areas. Maybe they have problems with reasoning or problem-solving or various things. And so that, knowing how to interpret that data can be very helpful in that area. You see some of the other interventions there. And another thing you might not think of with math, but language scaffolds can really be helpful in other curricular areas, not just language arts. So we've got those in place, as well as culturally responsive practices. And as a result, we have got more teaching staff having access to data to target student needs and resources for interventions and culturally responsive practices. And then finally, we have increasing by 5% the number of highly effective instructional strategies used in classrooms from fall this year to the spring of next calendar year. And that really is continuing our focus, not a new focus, but really continuing our focus on purpose engagement and assessment as high-quality, highly-effective teaching strategies. And being able to, for a principal or other administrator to go into a classroom and see those practices in place are very indicative of high-quality teaching and learning taking place. So we really want to be seeing those showing up every time we walk into a classroom. And we have a new 5Ds evaluation tool in place this year that should also help our administrators be able to surface that with our teaching staff and be able to hold them accountable to making sure that those are being utilized in the classroom. So kind of have a couple of other slides here at the back, which are really just meant to kind of talk about, you know, we have these goals and we do things and we have results, but really, how is all of that information used to drive change? And there's just kind of an example here of how we might kind of break something like S-Back math scores down into, okay, what are the treatments or interventions that we are utilizing within that goal area? And, you know, what kind of resources are we putting toward that? What kind of data are we seeing that are aligned to each one of these? And that will really ultimately help us do things like academic return on investment, which is kind of cleverly depicted here. I have to give Travis kudos for this one. The dollars you invest divided by the number of happy students impacted by increased achievement kind of can help you identify what that academic return on investment looks like. Academic return on investment is a part of smarter school spending. It's not all of it, but it is one thing that we want to start looking at as we move forward.
Want to add a text for me?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Are you ready for questions?
Sure.
Do we have questions? We don't have questions.
We don't, Josh.
Thank you very much. All right, financial report with Michelle. We have your, as always, very comprehensive report. Do you have any highlights for us, or do you just want some questions?
Yeah, the report is in there. I would like to note that on our workers' comp reports that we are going from 1617 to 1718 and then to our current year, for the months of July and August. And I think that's, you know, kind of kudos to our community in the way this is happening there in the state. And other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions if I have.
I'll see you. Excellent, thanks very much. Okay, we are at a very exciting time of the night where we're at policies for first reading. So what we're going to do is I'm just going to go through each one and say the name of the policy and then ask if anybody has questions or comments about that particular policy. And if not, we'll just move right to the next one, okay? Okay, so we're starting with 5A, Policy EHA, Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act. Any questions for Michelle on that policy, EHA? B, all policies related to safety and security. There was one on here, Martin, that you wanted to...
It's under J.
Okay, J. Oh, it's not under B. Okay, just kidding. Okay. So EV Safety Program, any questions for Casey on that? EBAC Site Safety Committees? Any questions for Casey? EBC, EVCA, Emergency Procedures and Disaster Plans? Any questions for Casey? EBCB, Emergency Drills and Instruction, any questions for Casey? EBCC, Housing Threats, any questions for Casey? EBCD, Emergency School Closures, any questions for Casey? EC, Management and Inspection of Buildings and Grounds? Any questions for Casey? ECA, Security of Buildings and Grounds, any questions for Casey? Like an auctioneer. ECA, Access to Buildings, any questions for Casey? ECAAA, Employee Identification Badge System? Any questions for Kana or Casey? ECAV, Vandalism, Belicious Mischievous or Theft? Any questions for Casey?
Um, I have a statement, not a question.
Absolutely.
But I wanted to say that the first two sentences, they have been merged into one sentence because it's kind of repetitive.
Thank you. Excellent. Any other questions or comments for Casey on that one? Thank you, Samantha. Okay, ECAV, School Resource Officer, any questions for Casey? EI, Risk Management? Questions for Michelle? JFCJ, Weapons in the Schools, any questions for Casey or Dale? Jackie?
I just have one thing. We referenced in here a specific board policy in the, under the discipline heading. We referenced board policy JD, or JGDA. But we're, but in other policies, I noticed we're not referencing specific board policies. So I just didn't know if there was a reason that that one was in there. But when we reference board policy in others, we didn't. It's just a question, or if it's, because then if we drop that policy or we change something with that policy, then do we have to then go back into this one and update that? I just didn't know if there was a, does that make sense?
I know what you're saying. I believe that it's encapsulated in another policy for discipline already. The reword, it's referenced in this one because it also applies to that main policy on JGDA.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was...
Yeah, they do go hand in hand.
Okay.
Because you need to look at this one to make sure you're interpreting the other one correctly.
Okay, that makes sense then. Okay, thank you.
And that's the, I'm just going to jump into your question. That's the recommended way to do it as opposed to having just one policy?
I would say so because...
Pretty common, yeah.
Yeah, because the one is like a general ed policy and then the other one is specifically supporting students with special needs. And there's a lot of legislation that goes back and forth. So it would be wise, best practice for us to overlook.
Thank you. Yeah, Martin?
I read an article in the Oregonian, which is just one data point. But it was opining about school districts in Oregon ability to actually ban people with a concealed carrying permit to actually carry a weapon in the school. They opined that many districts have this policy, but it actually isn't possible. That the districts can have policy that affects employees, affects students, but if you're a parent and you have a concealed handgun license, you can actually bring that weapon into the school. So it's not my particular agenda, but I just didn't want to establish a policy that would then be challenged and we'd have to back down from that. So do we know if that's actually the case?
That is correct.
Okay, so should we, should our policy be rewarded to not imply that if you have a CHL, you can't come into the school?
Isn't it just this on students?
This one says for students.
But doesn't it say anybody?
It's a student.
This is a student, there's usually, we have a staff one, a student one.
Okay, okay.
We don't have a policy for...
Like parents?
Parents that refers to concealed carrying.
Okay. That's why I misread that then.
But you are correct, we can, we can refer to the staff for bringing that, but in terms of a community member that has a concealed carrying permit.
I mean, the Gun Free Zone Act is still installed at the federal level, but Oregon law allows that to happen.
Right.
So we can still reference that, we can reference that, the Gun Free Zone Act. But when it comes down to it, as far as the enforcement or law enforcement, they can't.
So does the Gun Free Zone Act say that we can prohibit them?
It does, because it has...
Then that's federal law, isn't federal law supersede state law? Yes, it does. So...
Not in this case, we've gone around, ran through the law enforcement called HBD and the Sheriff's Department. Is there a, is there a specific question we can answer for?
Yeah, well, as I read through it, I just, I thought I was reading it from the standpoint of it applied to anybody who walked in the school, which in my example would be apparent, that the policy says they can't have a weapon, but the reality is they can, under certain conditions, have a weapon on that person. Or actually licensed to do that.
Yeah, it's a J policy, so it's specific to students.
Okay, very good. I missed that nuance. Thank you, Casey.
Jackie?
So my question is, just to follow what Martin said. I think part of the confusion is the title just says Weapons in Schools and then it says Students Shall Not Possess. So I don't know if we can change the title or if it's necessary to do that, or if it is really clear that it's just students.
But we have one, again, there's another one that is for staff.
For staff, you're right, you did say that, I'm sorry.
And then we don't have one for everybody else.
Okay. And I just had a question. It says, under exceptions.
Right.
Do we do hunter-safety courses? Just, I'm just curious.
That would be, so we don't, but here's how the example, how that could happen. Let's say that an outside organization wanted to use our facility and pay a rental fee, just like Boy Scouts would. That would allow for that instruction to take place in a school for that purpose. Not for an educational purpose that we're overseeing.
Okay, that makes sense. Weapons related to vocational courses or weapons-related sports? So I'm assuming the sports is like the starter gun for a track and field?
Could be.
Or javelin or something like that?
Yep, our flag teams have...
Oh, they do have Arkansas and St. Louis, right?
Replica.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's right.
And there are some schools that have units, we're talking about Civil War, that they've brought in
Oh, okay.
for the exception.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure, so I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Mark, any other questions on that one? Or you, Mark?
Yeah, on the exceptions, you talked about how they apply to the students, but the exception makes it sound like it's general.
I missed that.
He says that, we say it's just students, but in the exceptions, he was hearing it as if it applied to everyone? To like the community? Is that what you're saying, Mark?
Board policy, yes, board policy, I'm trying, Martin's calling it. Does this exception belong in this policy or something?
This is, it's for the...
It's working on instruction.
It's for the, the way that I believe when we looked at this before, it was, it's in this policy because the superintendent, as he may authorize other persons to possess weapons for the courses and programs. The SROs or law enforcement, a lot of times are there for student programs. And so this, everything in this policy is specific to students and how the weapon could be used in instruction or in the presence of students. I think we need to look at it like that. If I remember, it's been quite a while since we've really looked into that, the legal ease of that, but that's what I remember at the time, why it's in the student policy.
Mark, are you read?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Casey, does, when you just read it though, without understanding the nuance of it being a student policy, I see why I got confused. It says, "In accordance with Oregon law, no person shall possess or discharge firearms defined by Oregon law in a school building or school grounds." So it really is a castle-wide net. And you quickly lose track that you're talking about students here. You know, maybe I might suggest we just pull this out and this particular one, we'll take a fresh look at it, just to make sure. Almost really just more for readability, not necessarily for content, just so it's clear who we're talking about.
So I think maybe it suggested would be that we bring back all of the weapons policies at the same time. I think that would provide some clarification in terms of what is being applied to whom. That may be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do that.
I would love some legal context for...
Well, there's been lots of...
Yeah, but some sort of an explanation would be great.
We can do that.
Thank you. Arms like Lisa? All right, great.
What do you want?
Let's move right along then. So we are now at JFCM, Friends of Violence with Casey and Dale. JH, Student Welfare with Casey and Dale. JHF, Student Safety with Casey and Dale. JHFE, Reporting of Suspected Abuse of a Child with Casey and Dale. JHFEAR1, Reporting of Suspected Abuse of a Child with Casey and Dale. All right, JHHA, Crisis Prevention and Response with Casey and Dale. Oh, Martin, I missed you. Was that this one or...
Yeah, no, it's just, sorry.
Oh, good, okay.
So Casey and Mike, I applaud the considerable work of the HSDT to tee up all these policies and especially this group of policies related to safety and security. I ask that this policy, JHHA, Crisis Prevention and Response, not be deleted as it is, as is currently recommended. Rather, I request that it be rebounded to reflect the excellent work Superintendent Scott and others in the district and the community are doing to proactively address safety and security. are doing to proactively address safety and security concerns.
Do we want like a head nod or thumbs up or do we?
This is first reading, so no action is required, but I believe that reflects the goals of the board.
Is anybody like vehemently against what Martin just said?
Right, I think the first reading stuff is just to flag things that we need further investigation on and to follow up what Martin said, that you know, it, I like his idea, but I'd also love to hear why OSBA suggested people do this. Is there some legal liability that having this policy imposed on students, I just can't see from the nature of policy?
So in our, in our discussions with OSBA, it really centered around not being that specific with your policy. So that's really what it is, is that that may be something that they would indicate would be more suitable for a, some type of protocol notebook or AR or that kind of thing, but again, it's just a recommendation. We can choose to delete that policy or not. I know that Martin's suggestion reflects the values of the board around safety and making sure that that remains in the forefront of a conversation, that we involve the community members in that conversation. So while that was the original recommendation by OSBA, I don't think it hurts us at all to keep that policy.
I don't know which one of you pushed it, but, okay, Jackie?
I just wanted to say that I, one reason I believe we should keep it is because it's something really important to teach the students. And coming from a student and seeing the peers around me where they go hand in hand with this and I feel as if we don't learn enough about it. And so I feel like, I was reading within the side comments about there was section eight, nine, and 10, it was about teaching students. And I feel like that's something really important that we should focus on and that we shouldn't take out. So kind of going back to what Martin was saying, it's something that I was a little bit confused on, and I said a little bit on it, that is something I think should be said.
Yudira? At the top of the page here, it says that the language is covered in policy EBC slash EBCA and that the district's emergency response and safety program, can we also see that? So then we can compare it to this one that we want to delete? All right, okay, let's go to 21KK Visitors to District Facilities with Casey and Dale. Any questions? KN Relations with Law Enforcement Agencies with Casey and Dale, for Casey and Dale. Students?
I had a question, and the very last sentence there, it says the district shall not import in wait, no, no, sorry, the second to last, says outside agencies delivering
Subpoenas?
Subpoenas and or warrants to students. I wanted to ask, what type of warrant is it referring to?
Casey, you?
That'd be a warrant for arrest from a law enforcement or a court.
Because I think she's thinking search warrant, arrest warrant, if there was, if we need to specify that.
Oh, it could be theoretically any of those.
All right, great job. Thank you, everybody. All right, believe it or not, we made it through all those. We are now at item F on our agenda, which is to approve the consent agenda. So I'm ready to hear a motion.
I moved to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
See, it was moved by Kim and seconded by Erica to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Okay, if you would like to approve the consent agenda as printed, as Kim moved and Erica seconded, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, the consent agenda is approved. And we are at action items, item G, proclaim American Education Week. So that is on page 90 of your packet. So Val, do we need a motion and then I read it and then we vote, or how do we, what's our, I should have asked that upstairs, I'm sorry.
You read it and then you vote.
Okay, so I read it before or can we have a motion first?
You can't have a motion first.
Okay, why don't we have a motion first and then I'll read?
I move that we proclaim November 12th through 16th of 2018 as American Education Week in the Hillsborough School District.
Second. So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Martin that we proclaim November 12th through 16th, American Education Week in Hillsborough School District. So I will read the proclamation and then we can vote on if we would like to approve that proclamation. Okay, proclamation. Whereas, public schools are the backbone of our society, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas, education employees, be they licensed, classified, and technical support staff or administrators, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas, our nation is celebrating the week of November 12th through 16th, November 12th through 16th, 2018, as American Education Week. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Directors of Hillsborough School District does proclaim the week of November 12th through 16th, 2018, as American Education Week in Hillsborough School District, with the theme Great Public Schools, A Basic Right and Our Responsibility. The Board of Directors further encourages all citizens to extend their commitment to public education and to the future of our children by supporting our community's schools through the contribution of time and energy. All right, so if you would like to approve that proclamation, as Kim moved and Martin seconded, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
If not, please say no. Excellent. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We are now at item two under our action items, appoint budget committee members. With Michelle, we discussed this upstairs. Do you have anything to add since that, no? Okay, all right, so then we are looking for a motion to appoint the budget committee members as discussed upstairs.
I move that the Board of Directors appoint the following candidates to the open positions on the Hillsborough School District Budget Committee. Appoint Nina Carlson to position three on the budget committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2021. Appoint Kyle Taylor to position four on the budget committee with a term expiring on June 30th, 2021. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim that we adopt or do we appoint those folks to the budget committee? Is there any discussion? Martin?
Yes, we're blessed to have these marvelous candidates, but I would also like to commend Elizabeth Fishnesson for her service on the budget committee. She stepped in to fill a vacancy and just wanted to really applaud her for her service on that committee.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, so it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim that the Board of Directors appoint the following candidates to the open positions on the Hillsborough School District Budget Committee. Appoint Nina Carlson to position three on the budget committee with a term expiring on June 30th, 2021. Appoint Kyle Taylor to position four on the budget committee with a term expiring on June 30th, 2021. If you would like to approve those appointments, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
If not, please say no. Thank you. All right, item three under our action items, adopt board goals. So you can find that on page 94 of your packet. We did not get much of a chance to discuss these upstairs, so why don't we look for a motion and then we can open up for discussion.
I move that the Board of Directors adopt our goals as are printed in the board meeting packet.
Second.
So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Martin that we adopt the 2018-19 board goals as printed in the packet. Is there any discussion? Kim?
Thank you for, I was gonna be able to for taking a lengthy conversation and making it so concise. I appreciate your efforts on that and I think these are the right things to be working on.
Martin?
Yes, I really appreciate your work, Lisa, and I also really appreciate how staff has come along immediately and just fleshed this out and given some actionable, particularly that in the advocacy committee. You know, we had a lengthy discussion of that in the work section, and I think this is really a great, more of the really board goals is kind of aligned with what we HSD wants to do in this area, so this is spot on.
Jackie?
Like I said upstairs, I think, I would like to have us have a little more discussion about adding providing safe and secure working environments for staff and learning environment for students. Again, like I said upstairs, I'm not sure how we would measure that. We do have the committee that we're, the safety committee that we're doing and meeting. So again, I'm not sure how we would measure it. But I just think it's something that we really need to have maybe a little more discussion on, to see if there's something that we can come up with to how to measure that besides maybe the incident reports. I don't, I mean, I I don't know. I don't have an answer. I just don't want us to I'm not ready to let go of that call.
So we only have one meeting in November and one in December, so I assume those are gonna be kind of packed, but if not, maybe we can add it as a board discussion item for one of those board sessions. And if we can't in November or December, then we can do that at the just work session meeting in January, because we do no longer. So if people feel, feel like they're not doing that, you can kind of mention that one.
And I'll do some research and see if I can find measurable ways to measure that that aren't that don't add a lot of work to our already busy staff.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Jackie. Okay, any other discussion or questions, comments? Okay, it has been moved by Kim and seconded by Martin to adopt the board goals as printed in the packet. If you would like to adopt those board goals, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
If not, please say no. I think those are adopted. Great.
I just have a question. So does that mean that when, if we decide we want to add that one, we can re-add it?
We can re-adopt.
We can, it's flexible.
This is a start, it's not like a required
Okay, okay, absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
All right, item four, award security systems. Casey, Adam, Dawn?
Yeah, as part of the 2017 bond projects that we, as we've been discussing, we have forward, put forward to install our security trio, which includes cameras, access control, and intrusion alarms set out in RFP back in the summer for the first six schools listed. We did our standard process where we had a district committee along with our consultants to interview three qualified firms. The result of those interviews is the recommendation to award the security systems implementation contact, contract to complete security solutions for the first six schools.
Any questions for Casey at this point?
Yeah, I was just had a couple of questions about the is there a particular issues in the RFP that we were asking them to solve? Like was there a difference in what our buildings currently have, that why we went this route?
So we really don't have very much of any of this in our buildings. Our high schools have outdated camera systems. We have this admin building and a couple of other department buildings have some access control, but none of our school buildings do. And we have an outdated intrusion alarm system. So the goal is to get all buildings these options implemented.
So it'd be just one, it will provide a solution for all of our buildings to unfold in?
Correct. This is for the first six on our schedule, but all the rest will follow.
This, me, Martin, this sets the standard for what, the tools, the hardware and the software that would go throughout the district across, so it can all be interoperable.
And I just had a follow-up question of how does this interface then with our newer buildings that are gonna be, the new schools that are gonna be built? Is there?
This will be the systems implemented. So I guess when we're looking at this too, the installer, Rees, is going to install the specific equipment that we've specified. So all the buildings will have that same equipment for these three implementations.
Just two quick questions. So access control, that's not changing access into the front door into the office. That's different.
No, that'll be incorporated, that's like intrivestibules.
That, yes.
Yeah, so it's not the physical work of that, but this is the products that will be on the technology side on those specific doors.
Okay, and this technology will work already with what we've installed in like Century High School for the first responder security, that's
Totally separate. You're talking about the DAS distributed antenna systems.
Yes, thank you.
Totally separate.
Okay, okay.
And then I wanted to ask a clarifying question for security. Is it gonna be more for the doors and everything? Is it gonna be more like there's been talks about having like a card scanner, is that something that's gonna be coming in, or is it gonna be more just an enforced door?
This is a card scanner that staff allow access to, and those doors will be automatically opened and locked on certain patterns.
And there's no future talk for that on classrooms, just on the main?
This is just for exterior doors.
Thank you very much, Casey. All right, I'm ready to hear a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors award the security systems implementation contract for Century High School, Hillsborough High School, Brown Middle School, Pointer Middle School, South Meadows Middle School, and Miller Big Picture to Rees Complete Security Solutions for $1,074,237.15.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Yudira. Is there any further discussion? All right, so it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Yudira that the Board of Directors award the security systems implementation contract for Century High School, Hillsborough High School, Brown Middle School, Pointer Middle School, South Meadows Middle School, and Miller Big Picture to Rees Complete Security Solutions for $1,074,237.15. If you would like to approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
If not, please say no. Thank you. Item five. Are you so excited, Dawn?
I'm still not so excited, maybe right here.
Okay, here we go, it's time. Do you have any other exciting things you want to share with us?
I have already, my enthusiasm bubbles over to this one, I think we already have that, so.
I know we asked Dawn some questions upstairs. Do we have any other questions? Yeah, I'm ready to hear a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to sign the intergovernmental agreement with City of Hillsborough as included in the October 23rd, 2018 board meeting packet on behalf of the Hillsborough School District.
Second.
It's been moved by Martin and seconded by Kim. Is there any further discussion?
I could see Dawn is gonna dance in the back of the audience.
Unfortunately, the camera can't see it. Okay, it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Kim that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to sign the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Hillsborough as included in the October 23rd, 2018 board meeting packet on behalf of the Hillsborough School District. If you would like to approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
If not, please say no. Great, that motion passes. Wonderful. All right, it is now time for item H on our agenda, HCU and HA reports. Come on down, Jill and Devin.
Hi, Jill Mulay, Hillsborough Education Association President, and I just wanted to say thank you to the students. I love the questions that you ask. Appreciate your voice in the room. And I wanted to share about our My School, My Voice, which was the $15,000 NEA grant that I talked about last month, and actually have cards made now, so I'm gonna keep wanting to talk and then pass the rest down. And this is the site where you can actually go and take the checklist. It's not really a survey, it's more of a checklist, and you just check off the school that you're going to, or the school that your child goes to, or the school that you live nearest to. And you have the opportunity to take this checklist, and then once you do that, our ask is that you fill in who you are, like I'm a student, or I'm a parent, or I'm a community member, and then pay it forward. Then you pass it on to someone else who has that opportunity. It's in Spanish on one side, English on the other. And there's actually one of those little URM codes. And you, there's actually one of those little URM codes where you can hold your phone over and it'll take you right to the link. So, um, we will be sharing more information out with, um, community members and parents. We are currently working to have a luncheon with, uh, PTA, PTO. I'm never really sure what to call them either, PTA or PTO. But, um, and then reaching out to them so that they can help us connect to parents during school conference, that school conference week. But the hope is, is that we get hear from, it's, it's under the Every Student Succeeds Act. And our hope is, is that we hear from not just teachers and folks in the room tonight, but that we hear from students, parents, community members. And so that we really have a direction as to what Hillsborough School District family really wants and says that we need for every student to succeed in the Hillsborough School District. And we feel we can do this together collaboratively and, um, maybe even help if we look forward to like the local option levies or something like that. We are excited to have a huge culmination of an, uh, event in the spring with Suzanne Bonamici because she is a real founder of ESSA. We're waiting now to hear when she will be able to participate and attend that. And so I don't have a spring date to roll out all of the, the data and the information, but definitely will once we hear from, from her. And hoping that she can attend that, that day and maybe in open house. We're thinking maybe at Ruth Ridge Park area, have it all day where parents and community can come and just look at the results and we can just celebrate, um, what we're doing well and, um, kind of have a more of a linear focus on what we need to do. So we're very excited about that. And then I'm not gonna take the whole time down, but the last thing I want to say is we are still bargaining and, um, we're bargaining, we're bargaining hard. We're working really hard. We're coming together and we're really trying to, uh, meet each other and make it work for both of us. We're getting into the hard stuff right now. We're getting into like salary and benefits and, and some time that teachers need to feel well and to be able to do their job well. Um, I have to say that the last two paychecks that we've gotten, that even that I've gotten, have been less than last year because of, uh, some of the insurance, the increase in cost of insurance. And so it kind of feels like a pay cut right now because we haven't settled and we haven't been able to deal with that. And so, um, I, I think that's important to know. And we're really hoping that, um, you know, we can continue to be proud of, um, the living wage that we give our educators and the money that we start our new teachers off with and also our longevity and our, and our educators that've been with us for years and years. So we're really hoping to finish this bargaining up as soon as we can. And, uh, we appreciate collaboratively working together. Thank you.
Evening. Um, so I've been able to spend a lot of time out in the buildings as my, kind of full-time release. And I do want to say that everybody I talk to, it's like, how's the school year going? Any problems? What's going on? Most often everyone's like, kids are doing great. School's off to a great start. We're really happy to be here, really thankful for jobs. Which I think is awesome. And it's, it's, it's kind of great to work in a school district that everybody likes coming to work every day. Uh, but those who don't, aren't in that, in area usually comes down to either confusion about what their role is or, you know, negative interactions with other staff. But the one that keeps coming back, especially from custodians, is the lack of access to vacation. We know that, you know, because we are the K-12 school district, we want to make sure that people are here every day for the students. And we try to push, uh, for our full-time staff to breaks and, um, to like spring break, summer break, that type of thing. Unfortunately, not all of our staff are able to take time during that time. Especially our custodial staff because, you know, winter break, spring break, summer break, that is their big work time. They get projects, they do the school, they do painting, they close all this stuff down. And in elementary schools where they only rehab two custodians, you can't have both custodians out at the same time. So, because that effectively closes the school for a week. And we've had times in the past where like a waterway broke and no one was around and nobody caught it for a week. And, and it's those kinds of things that make it really difficult for custodians to get their vacation. Uh, we heard you bargaining that. No one has lost vacation time, and that's correct. But usually what happens is that June rolls around and your supervisor comes to you and say, "Hey, if you don't take your vacation, you're gonna lose it. So make sure you take vacation in the next two weeks." It's not a vacation. That's like a forced work shortage. Which, you know, they don't, they get paid for that time. But we have people who want to be able to see family, to do reunions, to go to cultural festivals in Mexico or in other countries. That doesn't happen during the summer, or it doesn't always happen during the summer. So, um, so I just want to really just focus in on that, that, you know, our custodians understand that they need to be able to be here at the school and make sure that it's clean every day. But with the lack of custodial subs and the blanket statements of just no vacation, regardless of how far in advance you do, regardless of whatever work or, or arrangements you make with your principal, your fellow custodians, it just makes it really hard for people to think that it's a benefit. It's just another thing they gotta deal with. And it makes life more difficult when you say during your busiest time, you have to be gone for two weeks. And I just think there's a better way to solve it. And I think we can do that as we keep talking with folks. So I'm hopeful that we can find a solution for that and that we could finally solve this custodial problem that we've had for over a year ago. So, thank you.
Okay. Um, we're at discussion time. We do still need to talk about conference panel. Let's do that when we get to the Board of Directors section. So don't let me forget these, everybody. And we'll start with the student representatives. So let's go, let's start.
Just go. Okay. Um, so there's a couple of different points I wanted to bring up that's been done. As a board, I kind of wanted to talk about. There's been a lot of stuff that we kind of already covered, especially talking with Casey about the security. There's been a lot of rumors going around about that. One of them was cleared up tonight with the, um, ID cards. However, there's been a lot more of that. And so I was just kind of wondering if there's gonna be any more clarifications that's gonna be sent out to staff members that can be given to students? Because when students get concerned, especially about major safety things like this, it gets kind of chaotic. And that's how a lot of bad things come out of it. And so that's just something I think we should try to work on. I know we're still figuring it out, but I think if we're gonna publicly talk about it and that we want to be clear on when the students hear about it. And then I also wanted to talk about the new thing implemented this year that I know Samantha is gonna be talking about. It's the juniors taking the PSAT for a second time, which was another thing that no one has really talked about. Staff members are really confused why juniors are required to take this as we took it our sophomore year and we're later going to be taking the actual SAT in this spring. So that's just kind of some more confusion we've had. And then on a happier note, uh, Century's leadership team and hopefully experience where's that Hillsborough High School. We are working on bringing with Make-A-Wish for the Washington County area. And this is still kind of, you know, this isn't works of it. But that's something that we want to work on bringing to Century and even further experience the whole, the whole Hillsborough School District.
Um, that too. What should I say about the PSAT? Um, I was pretty confused about that too because I was like, it took me last year. So why are we taking it again for those juniors? Yeah, and they haven't really explained why. They just said that we're gonna have to take it tomorrow. So that's what I'm gonna do. And, um, I just wanted to talk about, um, a field trip that I went to today. It was in Portland. It was to, uh, Porch House and we got to see Mont Trails. And it was very interesting. I liked it. And, um, I'm in Manchester and today we had a meeting. And I was able to attend for the most of it before coming to visit. And, um, we talked about a fundraiser that we will do and also, uh, we're gonna do an altar for the day of the dead. That's...
Mike?
I'm just gonna ask, be able to respond to the PSAT question. We, we will give you additional information. It sounds like there's confusion on that. But just to give you a preview of coming attractions, we'll have to...
Yeah, I think this really arose out of, um, a request by, um, counselors, principals, and just even having conversations with some teachers regarding college and career readiness. We've offered it to juniors before, but not all juniors have taken advantage of it. And it does allow students to be identified for national merit scholarships and other sorts of scholarships through the score. But it doesn't offer it to sophomores. As a state, we offer it to sophomores, but we feel as a value in supporting our kids on college and career readiness that we also would offer and pay for it at the junior year. So I'm sad that you didn't get the correct information because that would make a little bit more sense to you guys. Also, just the alignment in terms of being able to take that SAT or ACT and not thinking, "Oh yeah, I took that." October, when I was a sophomore versus, I just took one six months ago. Students in general feel more prepared for those college readiness exams when you take it within proximity. So that's why the addition.
Thank you. We will get additional information.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I, I wanted to pass down the line, a book list that we have for board members. Um, as we have shared information regarding trauma-informed care and some of the work that's going on in the schools, we've mentioned some books. So we have a number of them here. If you would like to have one of those to read, just put your name there and we will make sure and get, we, we purchase some of those for you to read. If that fits in your reading schedule. Next thing I'd like to talk about is we have had, um, I had the opportunity, we too, I was invited to participate with seven superintendents throughout the state, an event hosted by Apple. And it's a one-day event, so it's a quick event. And the idea is that, um, they would, they would provide for us an executive brief, briefing on integrating technology into the schools to transform student learning and some of the best practices around that. Um, the thought there is that, um, they were to create outlets throughout the state so they could expand that conversation through the state of Oregon. It is, uh, it is, it was, uh, the idea is that we build understanding in a handful of superintendents and we can take that conversation back and, um, and come back and share that information. We have been, uh, checked it out to make sure that it passes muster on the ethics test. And so we're all good there because they will be hosting that. And Lisa is, um, asked to sign the letter to indicate that's okay for me to participate in that. But before asking her to do that, I just wanted to inform everybody that that was happening and see if you had any concerns around that. Very good. All right. Thank you. Couple more things. Uh, we did have a community safety committee, um, meeting last week. And that was a great opportunity for us to engage the community in a conversation around safety and what that, and what that means to them. Um, I think more than anything, the parents that were there were very surprised to see the depth that we go to when it comes to providing a safe and secure environment for our students. And they did have some, a number of suggestions regarding communication, around how we get the word out around that. And we also set an agenda for our next meeting prior to wrapping up. So I think that's going to be a great avenue for discussion for us. That is going to serve us very well. And finally, I'd just like to comment on the fall summit that we had last week. What a great opportunity to showcase the diverse needs and resources of the students that we serve. Um, some of the, some of the students in their presentation, right? It was just very encouraging and just heartwarming to, to see them in action. Um, I think that the main takeaway for me is the number of students that engage in summer activities and provide opportunity, they're actually providing opportunities for other students so they can be successful. So, uh, just a great event. And thanks to Beth and her team for putting that together. Much appreciated.
All right. Let's, uh, talk about the OSBA conference first and then we'll do our normal, um, Board of Directors time. So the Oregon School Boards Association Conference, Fall Annual Conference, is November eighth and ninth in downtown Portland. And, uh, six board members are going. And so, um, planning for the conferences is different in different years. Sometimes people want to kind of hash out the schedule so that their, people aren't, folks aren't duplicated in workshops. And other times we've just sort of said, "Okay, kind of go where you want to go." Um, and then we'll bring back and, and share the information that the, um, that we see. I think for so many of us going, it might be difficult for us to assign like workshops to everyone that are not all the same, but we can do that if you guys want. So that's, that's the information. What, how do you guys want to do it? Uh, Jackie, Kim, Erin?
Um, my first question is, are our student representatives, um, invited to attend? So I know, and I, I haven't had just to look at the, the tracks. I know that at the National School, there were some tracks and informative, um, sessions for student reps. I just didn't know, I met with Samantha on, uh, last night. And I just thought it would be maybe even just on Saturday to just attend, you know, that, those sessions, I think would be even on purrs and, you know, the things that might be helpful. If I didn't know if they were, that's a good idea. I don't know if we can do that right now.
If we have a student willing to go to a purr session on a Saturday, we can... No, we, we can definitely make the opportunity available. How about we give a call to OSBA? We're happy to provide them the resources to do it. Um, if that fits in your schedule, we're happy to do this.
What time is it?
Like, dates are ninth of November. So whatever. I'm sure with that.
Eight.
Yeah.
I don't, uh, the tenth. Oh, my gosh. I even have the right date.
It's the tenth. So Saturday, the tenth. Saturday's the tenth. Okay. Yes.
Don't go on the eight.
No.
Yeah.
Where is everyone?
I think it'd be simple for Hillsborough School District to...
Yeah?
If it is possible.
Nope. I don't... Okay. Awesome. Great. Any other, oh, yeah. Yeah, any other?
Um, mine was just if you, um, I don't think we need to master your schedule, but I, um, as an LPC member, there are some that I have to go to that weren't necessarily my first choice. So I would love if anyone takes notes at any of the ones that they would go to. The Board of Directors are really quick to sign up and they kind of leave the scraps for the LPC members.
Yeah, I would just add that, um, maybe looking at our goals that we were talking about and seeing if there's any classes that align with what we're, what our goals are and signing up for those, even if they're just more of a goal, one of those things.
Wonderful. Okay. Um, I think that all sounds great. If anybody wants to carpool, um, not with me driving because I have Booster Jacks in my car. Um, but in your car.
Lisa will ride with me.
I would love to go with you. Sounds great.
If ever you have to be riding, that'd be excellent.
I would lose that. Thanks, Jen. But, you know, if, if last year kind of all the carpoolers were saying, "I'll go together." I wasn't really just trying to ask for a ride, but that also works. Okay. All right. So Board of Directors time now. Um, Jackie?
Sadly, I just wanted to thank, I don't have anything but to thank Angela and Adie for taking time out of your days and evenings to be here to, um, speak to us. Because I know sometimes that's not easy and I know you have family, so we're all busy. So thank you very much.
Mike, is there anything you want us as a board to do to recognize Rob Saxton?
Yeah, we can, we can work on that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
He seems to be exercising extraordinary leadership.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I just want to call up his attention to the consent agenda, uh, which is for, uh, I'm, uh, the gifts and donations. Sometimes we just overlook that and it's truly remarkable. Patterson Booster Club gave 10 grand. Kitama Coyote Community Club gave 16,450. And the Alm Garret Fund gave $50,000 to Lat Abers. Wow! Having been in the nonprofit world, that's some serious money we're talking about there. And I just, I just wanted to call that out. That's just really remarkable. Sometimes we just, we just consent agenda that and it just really struck me just worth calling out to take two minutes of our time and wrap up playing around that. And Elizabeth came back in. Uh, Elizabeth, I just wanted to say thank you for your service on the vice committee. Uh, really applaud you for stepping in when there was vacancy and going from zero to 100 really fast and contributing, uh, on that important committee. So thank you very much. And, uh, thank you, Mike, for standing up the safety committee and engaging with the community on the issues of safety and security. It was really important to me and I, and I think all of us on the board. And, and what you're doing there is absolutely spot on. It's, I had trouble, you know, actually voicing what I wanted. And what you're doing is exactly what I wanted. So, thank you. And also just to commend you and Beth for showing up at over 30 Longmont Coffee for another fabulous superintendent coffee chat. And put them on your radar. They're really a chance to sit down in a very intimate way and have a conversation with Mike and Beth and a few other self-selected K-12 community activists. And, and really just chat up a storm about whatever comes to mind. It's an hour of a deep dive into some really interesting stuff. And so, uh, today was the first one, I think, of the year, maybe the second one?
Second.
Second one. Okay. It was really fun. I missed the first one. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
I also just thank you for the summit. The student panel was really great. I was sitting with, um, some business leaders who really got into the conversation about, um... how to grow the programs and them really wanting student voice in that process and thinking about how do you use that of just have a thousand different opportunities? How can we go deeper with opportunities you already had? So we have a really good conversation in that small group. Um, I had the opportunity last week to visit Butter Nut Creek, and it's just exciting to see the change over the last few years with the main trauma-informed care school. Um, I could feel the difference in the building.
Okay, Mark.
Mark has the phone up. Do I turn Mark back on?
Yeah.
How do we do that? Do you think there's a button that says answer? Thank you.
Hello?
All right, it's all around.
Um, that's all I had. Mark's ready for his turn.
Mark, your turn.
All right, what time? Sorry to interrupt you. Uh, I just want to say that I know this was something was, uh, fantastic, like, hit the student panel. And a couple of my big takeaways from it were, um, you know, the, the more opportunities we have to put students in leadership positions for other students, uh, it works out tremendously well. So, you know, the more we can look for those opportunities, I think the better opportunity to be that the, the, all the students on the panel expressed very heartwarming stories of extreme effectiveness when they were put in position, we, we, your students. So, uh, you know, parents, that's something that works for it. On the other side, you know, it's even, you know, I, I'd say I, I am a big champion of our communications department, and we do a great job. But I wonder if, you know, it's, I'm an old person. It, it seems like many of our students don't understand what opportunities are available in these summer programs. Um, and I know we have tons and tons of effective methods for letting parents know, letting people know, but I, I, and I don't know, I don't have an answer. But I would love to, you know, try to figure out how to break through that communication barrier with our ninth graders and tenth graders to let them know that these tremendous programs are available. So I think we get even more engagement, more students participate if we find a way to do it.
Thanks, Mark. Yudira?
Um, I really enjoyed being able to go to the first coffee chat. Those are a lot of fun, and I look forward to attending, I think, next Thursday to Spanish. Um, this Thursday, yeah. Um, so, um, I'll be there. Um, sorry I won't be going to the conference with you guys, so take good notes. I'll be eager to hear what you guys learned.
Um, I don't have that much. I just wanted to say that I'm also just really excited about the partnership with the city, and the Don is excited about. I think those are the things that when we were running for office, we talked about having better partnerships with our other local government agencies, and this is like one of the ways that, um, it has come to fruition, and I'm just really excited about it. Um, because it's not just only for our students, but then when you think about the community that has access to, um, the internet and at a lower cost. And you think about those barriers that exist in our community, and I think this is a great opportunity for us, um, to partner. And I will be at the coffee chat on Thursday, and I will also be at the conference.
Thank you, Erica.
Um, I'll be at Friday's coffee chat. This Friday, so I'm very excited.
Lots of chatting, lots of coffee, lots of coffee. Um, and, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, I'm very excited about the conference. And then I also just wanna take the opportunity to remind everyone that, um, there is an election happening. Um, your ballots are due two weeks from today, um, and maybe in the eighth. So, um, it's very important to fill out your ballot, um, every single time. It is, it's, if we're talking about American Education Week and having a more civil and informed society and, um, being able to have your voice heard is sort of the fundamental foundation of democracy, so, um, don't take that for granted. Make sure that you fill it out. And we will see everybody again in November on the thirteenth. Thank you very much.